...twenty-fourth, special meeting of the Police and Fire Commission to order. Let me roll call Vice President Chau.
Here.
Commissioner Warren Wannazak.
Here.
Commissioner Marion Roloff.
Here.
And I am President Rod Goldhahn. So all commission members are present. On the phone, we have Attorney Kyle Gulya. Kyle, is there anyone there with you?
Yes, me.
Okay. And also on behalf of the Chief, Chief Smith is here at the table with us. And we have Attorney James Colney representing the Commission. And Attorney Windorf, do you identify yourself as Captain Todd Lepine?
Sure. Attorney Carly Windorf appears in person with Captain Lepine.
All right. And again, and we have some other members in attendance in the gallery, as well as Melanie Falk from the City HR Department to assist us in the process. Purpose of this hearing is to convene the Police and Fire Commission to set the date for hearing of the charges filed by Chief Andrew Smith concerning Captain Todd Lepine pursuant to Section 62.13, Paragraph 5, Sub-D Wisconsin statutes, and also pursuant to Section 1.07, pre-hearing conference to provide for an orderly exchange of witness information and exhibits, and whether the parties can reconcile differences and settle issues among themselves. We'll also look at the possibility of obtaining stipulations as to the facts of the case, and any procedural and other pre-hearing motions by the parties, and any other matters which may hinder the Commission in the performance of its duties. Initially, I'd like to go through, to review a record of discussions to date. This hearing is an appeal from an order of suspension under Section 1.04 of the PFC rules. On April 24th, 2018, Chief Smith hand-delivered to myself a document entitled "The Matter of Charges Filed Against Captain Todd Lepine," which will be referred to as "The Charges." Mr. Gulya filed a letter of appearance on behalf of Chief Smith on April 26th. I emailed a copy of those charges to Ms. Windorf, inquiring as to whether she would acknowledge receipt of the charges on behalf of Captain Lepine, and asking that she file a notice of appearance. And I emailed a copy of the charges to all commission members on that date. On April 28th, Attorney Windorf filed a notice of appearance, and also filed an acknowledgment of service effective April 26th of this year. Then, myself, President of the Grand Bay Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, and duly-appointed legal counsel, James Colney, conducted a telephonic conference at 8:45 a.m. on Tuesday, April 30th. All parties appearing by their counsel, following matters were discussed. Attorney Gulya explained that much of the file in this matter is the night shift investig- investigatory file. It's comprised primarily of investigation interviews of various officers, and includes the laudermail of Captain Lepine, and includes synopses of those interviews. As this information resulted in discipline to other officers, there will be a right to challenge the release of these public records for certain employees. Mr. Gulya intends to accomplish the required notices, but noted that it might take some time. He further stated there's a medical condition that might be involved in the case that could raise some issues with regard to confidentiality of that information. Attorney Windorf stated that part of her defense may involve the investigation of an extramarital affair of second night shift officers by Captain Lepine. She stated that she is putting together a list of items she would like to receive. Attorney Gulya stated that some of the MTD information may contain personally identifiable and other confidential information that may need to be redacted. So during that call, the following was determined. Attorney Windorf would have her list of requested items to Attorney Gulya on or before May 11th. Attorney Gulya will endeavor to have the requested documents, and any other documents and evidence he plans on using in the case, to Attorney Windorf on or before May 24th. And then the PFC will convene a hearing of this matter at 3:45 on Thursday, May 24th. The primary business of this first hearing will be to schedule the matter for hearing. The parties acknowledging that at least two eight-hour days will be necessary to solve and settle this matter. The PFC will also set dates for the following: the submission of respondent witness and exhibit lists, motion dates, and any related briefings, future hearing dates, and date for submission of any stipulations between the parties. Other matters of record: on May 2nd, Attorney Windorf stated that Captain Lepine might object to the automatic release of the charges. On May 3rd, after investigating, I provided notice of intent to release as required by Section 19.356 of Wisconsin statutes. On May 9th, Attorney Windorf gave notice of withdrawal of the objection. And on May 11th, Attorney Windorf filed with me a list of documents requested, 28 items, and a motion to dismiss the charges. On May 23rd, Attorney Gulya filed with me a letter to Attorney Windorf forwarding some of the documents requested, and a letter to the PFC explaining what has been filed to date, and an approximate schedule for further submission of documents suggesting after October 1st. And then, earlier today, Attorney Windorf filed a supplemental motion to dismiss. So matters for consideration today. We want to first talk about discovery, and any statutes that cover discovery with the PFC. PFC rules and statutes only provide for the compulsion of witnesses by subpoena. There's a requirement of full due process and just cause imposed on the Chief and the PFC, and that any records requested are public records. The Chief has recognized this and has been treating the release of records as such. Public records law requires notice to employees before releasing records that were compiled as a result of an investigation of which they were the object, and there's nothing that allows the PFC to require records released without complying with the notice requirements. Any further discussion on that?
I just wanted to touch base on those issues. Statutes really don't provide for any formal discovery, as Mr. Goldhahn has commented. There is, however, a requirement of due process and just causes, as we've stated. The one way we could do this is we could have witnesses called, and you would have an opportunity to attempt to cross them, and if you didn't have sufficient information, you would likely ask for an adjournment so that you could prepare to cross. Much more cumbersome process, but that seems to be what's provided for in the statutes. Instead, in this case, the Chief is recognizing that it makes it a lot more expedient to forward documents before. And I think that's the direction we're heading right now, but based on the information that we received from Mr. Gulya, and Mr. Gulya, you can pipe in anytime you want on this, we understand that it's going to take some time to get those documents together, and that the documents requested are pretty broad in their nature. I also understand that you have some concern about the length of time it might take to compile these documents. Mr. Gulya, you were going to say something, and I cut you off.
It's okay. We're dealing with a situation that I think the Professional Standards Division has not encountered before with the massive scope of the night shift investigation, and as a result of that night shift investigation, you had a tremendous volume of witnesses interviewed, significant allegations of wrongdoing, including harassment, victims of that conduct, and a number of subjects who were disciplined, and it simply at the end of the day is unprecedented, and as a bifurcation of that night shift investigation was the supervisor investigation that resulted in the discipline of Captain Lepine, and that investigation was also massive, done in conjunction, and obviously the length of time that that all took was tremendous. The resulting records, obviously, we respect that Captain Lepine wants to have a fair hearing, the Chief wants him to have a fair hearing. And if there's going to be a significant demand for the scope of records that's being made, it simply is going to take time to get to that hearing. If we have to look at all of the investigatory interviews that were conducted for purposes of the release of those records, it's going to take a monumental amount of time to get to a hearing, and so we're trying to look at a way to help the parties get to a hearing as quickly as possible while still being respectful of the tremendous workload that is already placed upon the Records Management Division. So I appreciate the consideration that's being given to that.
In that regard, I do want to make it clear that, in my opinion, as I would express it advising the PFC, I do not believe the PFC has any specific authority to compel the production of documents, only witnesses. And then the witness could be asked and to stake, to bring along documents, leading to that cumbersome procedure that I mentioned to you before, where you would then have the opportunity to review the documents, probably ask for an adjournment so you could prepare for cross. Very cumbersome process. Unfortunately, I don't know that we have any choice or any ability to compel. We certainly don't, in my opinion, have the authority to override 19356 with regard to the right of people to object to the release of information that was the result of an investigation involved in that. I think we have to give that right, and as a result, it is going to cause a delay. That's the long and the short of it. As far as getting the documents to you, if we want to proceed in that manner, which probably is a little more expedient than the other. So with all that in mind, I guess one logical thing we want to talk about is have you, have the parties had a chance to discuss the scope of the documents demanded, and the manner of producing them, whether there can be some limitations on them? I'm assuming, Mr. Gulya, that you're not expecting to produce all of these documents as evidence, are you?
No.
Okay. So I don't know if there's been any discussion about simply limiting some of the disclosure to what's going to be disclosed, what's going to be used in the case, or where you folks have been right now. I'm just trying to find a way to get to this before October. You know, it's a funny position that I know Captain Lepine is in, because on one case, they want to demand everything they can get, on the other case, very practically, it delays the hearing, which I can understand is something that you don't want to see.
Yeah, and let me clarify my interpretation of this, and why have I filed, frankly, so many motions? But that was my struggle when approaching what to demand, and I guess I would ask, prior to this, that the Commission help us in tailoring the scope of what should be produced as it relates to my motion to dismiss, my initial motion to dismiss.
Attorney Windorf?
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, I couldn't really hear you there.
So I guess I just wanted to orally clarify, or explain, the simultaneous filing of my request for documents and my initial motion to dismiss. I agree, I think what I've requested is broad and vague, but I really don't see any way around it as it relates to Captain Lepine's rights to confront the witnesses against him. I mean, those are things that are constitutionally and statutorily guaranteed him, and when the statement of charges, like I indicated in my first motion, lists a number of things like 24 to 30 officers alleged an environment of harassment, and it continues to refer to that, I guess, sibling investigation. I mean, if the department wants to tailor its scope of charges, and I mean, that's basically what Captain Lepine has as notice of what the evidence is against him, so that's basically where I'm coming from as far as, well, if this is the evidence you intend on producing at trial, the 24 to 30 officers, I don't think it's an unreasonable request to-
Know who they are.
Know who they are, what specific dates and times of the harassment were alleged, and as indicated in both of my motions, I just don't think we have that here. I would be happy to tailor my request for documents, I just think that given he's entitled to confrontation and cross-examination, that puts him in a very difficult position.
Well, having, having heard that, one thing that I think is kind of important for us to at least acknowledge is, well, or I guess, let me put this a different way. When I read the motion to dismiss, I read it almost more as a motion to make more definite and certain. There's a lot of things that you believe you need to know to be able to prepare the defense that aren't in the complaint document. So Kyle and the Chief, I guess I would ask you whether you have any intention, after reading the motion, to address those issues in the complaint, and clarify any of those issues, make them more specific, or if you've had a chance to discuss that at this point.
To get up to a long story short, one, the Commission has not set any sort of response timeline for that issue at all, and I understand that you would set a response timeline if you determined that one was needed. The general belief is that the charges that have been filed are sufficient. If the Commission were to determine that the charges required a greater level of specificity, then we could entertain that at that time with regard to that issue. To break it down, the charges themselves are not overly complex, they essentially identify four zones with regard to the MDT messages that were provided to Captain Lepine for review as one area, as it relates to Captain Lepine's discussion with a female officer of the department, and requests by her for assistance as a second zone, and a third zone being Captain Lepine's conduct during the investigatory interviews themselves for which he was a part. And then the fourth zone being Captain Lepine's own conduct involving statements that he made with regard to another member of the command staff. And so, at the end of the day, the, the, these charges themselves, we think, lay out and provide the requisite level of specificity as to put Captain Lepine on notice as to what he is, he is to base. If the Commission were ultimately to conclude after the filing of any sort of response brief that further information is necessary, that can be provided. Alternatively, I would be happy to discuss with the Chief whether he wishes to provide a heightened level of specificity in the charges if needed, but as indicated, we believe that that information's already out there. With that said, if the Commission wishes for us to respond to the, to the motion to dismiss, we are happy to do so.
I think in regard to the motions to dismiss, the, while the rules of the Commission allow the President to deal with evidentiary issues, I think traditionally, this body has brought any motion to dismiss before the entire PFC. And I think, and we allow for scheduling and so forth, and perhaps that's a logical way for us to proceed.
We could, but I'd like to, to check with the attorneys, do you think we can get to a point where we can proceed without having to go through that, that motion? I mean, between the two, can you work out the details of specifically the charges as stated, the things that you would need, and Attorney Gulya would have a chance to provide more specifics around those?
Well, and that's the trouble where I think I have. I think part of the defense is that Captain Lepine was removed from the night shift July of 2016, and as I mentioned in the motions, the time span of the investigations span, there's an additional five-month period where there were no captains on any ships, and I, it's my understanding that was pursuant to a departmental-wide restructuring, it wasn't through any fault of Captain Lepine. And it's my understanding that a lot of the specific incidents of harassment occurred in that five-month period when Captain Lepine was not assigned to the night shift. So that's part of where this lack of specificity comes from, because it just seems like the department is trying to say that he should have predicted these things when he was removed from the night shift, therefore removing a level of supervision from that night shift that may or may not have led to the specific incidents of harassment that aren't necessarily alleged or detailed in the statement of charges as we have them right now. So that's where I'm having a very difficult time nailing down the 24 to 30 officers over this extended time span. And then, you know, Attorney Gulya and I have had a telephone conversation last week where I think he pretty much expressed reluctance to release those because he didn't think that they were necessarily relevant.
We look back to the charges themselves, that Captain Lepine is alleged to have not properly handled the MDT message logs that were provided to him, and that that helped foster the environment that became that, that harassing environment that existed, as being the element in essence of the charge. The second area being that Captain Lepine was addressed by a female officer seeking assistance, and that that was not properly handled by him, as being the element there. To suggest that Captain Lepine in and of himself alone is responsible for what occurred on the night shift is a disservice to Captain Lepine. We're not asserting that whatsoever. At the end of the day, it's those areas where he was expected to conduct himself and expected to manage the employees that did not occur. And within that as well, there are specific assertions that Captain Lepine made during the investigation as it pertained to direction that he gave to specific personnel, subordinates under his command, the lieutenants, that the Chief disputes that that direction was given by Captain Lepine in that manner. And that's noted in the charges as well with specificity, that the lieutenants did not receive that direction to enforce that. So that's where, you know, I don't see how issues of timing as to when a specific act of harassment occurred in October of 2016 is germane to this issue at all. And that's simply not something that Captain Lepine is being charged with-
But it's in the statement of charges, though.
-because he wasn't the night shift captain at that time.
Correct. So then it's, I'm having trouble understanding why any of that is in the statement of charges whatsoever.
And it's in the statement of charges that's referenced in there, that individuals recognize that that type of environment existed in the department, and that Captain Lepine did not take appropriate action during the time period that the Chief believes he should have known that this was occurring.
Which is a five-month period beyond that of which he was assigned to the night shift? I mean, so as the Board is clearly aware, we've reached an impasse as far as what I believe is relevant and what the department believes.
Okay.
And that's fine. And if we've reached that impasse, then it's simply in order for Captain Lepine to have a fair hearing, he can make his requests, it's then going to just take time for the, for the department to respond?
And that's fine, and by way of clarification, is what I filed today. The reason for my impatience is, is the concept of, while I understand that this was a very sensitive investigation, I think, given the timeline of proceedings as it pertains to Captain Lepine, with respect to multiple copies of differing versions of differing numbers of charges that have been filed, and he had to have two separate Professional Standards interviews, and he was given two separate laudermail hearings, I think all of that, when anticipating this lengthy timeline, and considering that he's contested these charges from the get-go, is something that just doesn't sit well as it pertains to a speedy resolution of the matter. I guess I just don't think that the department can be surprised by any of this.
And I want to address that issue, that if Captain Lepine has concerns about why he was interviewed twice and why there were two separate laudermail hearings, that's what the purpose of the evidentiary hearing can demonstrate, and Captain Alza and Chief Smith can both provide testimony if asked at the hearing as to why there was a need for two investigatory interviews, and why there was that second laudermail meeting.
Okay, well, it sounds like we're at the point of going ahead and scheduling the motion hearing.
Thank you.
And going through that, yep.
For purposes of that scheduling, I'd like to get a date scheduled, if it's a situation where I do discuss with the Chief. I view the motion as a motion not to dismiss, but to make more definite and certain, and if that is the case, I, you know, we set a date for responses, I'm more than happy to discuss with the Chief whether we do wish to simply add to the charges or go with what's there. But I believe that what's there is legally sufficient from that standpoint at this time, I would certainly happy to respond in writing to that effect. But I would like the, the opportunity to leave that door open, that if there is a request to make it more definite and certain, if that is what the motion is going to be treated as, that if we do go down that path, that may easily cost in burden for everyone, or it may simply just be annulity if we believe that the charges are legally sufficient.
Well, I think we should treat it as what it stated, a motion to dismiss, however, if simply addressing some of the issues that are alleged to be insufficiently expressed eliminates the motion to dismiss, I think the Commission will be fine with that. So in structuring our motion hearing, I'd suggest the Commission that we encourage and give leave for the Chief, if, if he so chooses, to amend the pleadings to more directly address some of those issues, if the Chief feels the shift, or that that's appropriate. At the same time, asking you to put together your, your position on the motion to dismiss. I note at this point in time, we have a motion and a brief kind of statement in support of the motion. We don't have actually a full brief in support of that motion. I would suggest the Commission, our first, the first step would be to give some leave for the filing of a full brief in support of the motion, to be followed by a response by the Chief, and then simply set a hearing date. I don't know that we need another response. Do the parties think that's a reasonable way to proceed?
Yes, thank you.
That makes sense to me, I think that's an efficient way to proceed.
Okay. Attorney Windorf, how much time do you think you would need to prepare that?
When Attorney Colney, you indicate a full brief in support of the motion, can you just outline a little bit more specifically what your expectations would be as far as that? Would you be anticipating an affidavit from Captain Lepine?
If necessary, you know, that would be up to you. But specifics as to what is missing, I think you put a little bit more of that in the supplementary, but I haven't had a chance to-
Okay.
-review that closely. Law in support of the notion that there's a right to dismiss here, you know, taking consideration, I'm not sure that there is statute of limitations on bringing renewed charges, for example, addressing that issue perhaps would make some sense. And basically supporting why you believe that this, the complaint as it sits right now, the statement as it sits right now, is violated of due process to the extent where merit's dismissal.
Sure. And then as far as the evidentiary hearing, would you anticipate that to be oral arguments, or that there should be evidence presented?
We have done it as oral arguments in the past, but we would reserve the right, after seeing the responses, to see if it would be necessary to be evidentiary.
Okay.
Any issue with that, Mr. Gulya?
I believe that oral argument is satisfactory under the circumstances. I'm not inclined for the Commission to entertain any sort of evidentiary hearing on the merits outside of the formal evidentiary hearing in the case, but if the Commission were to determine that the taking of some form of limited evidence may be helpful, I think we can address that at a given time.
Right, exactly right. You know, once we've seen what you folks file, if we need some evidence to be taken, we'll let you know. But I would advise the Commission that it makes perfect sense to treat this as, as a motion that can be covered by oral argument.
Thank you. In that case, I appreciate the clarification. I could have that to the Commission within the week.
So if we were to say, let's say by next Friday, you'd be in good shape?
Yes, thank you.
Today, the first?
Today, the first.
Did everybody remember to bring their calendars? I probably should have brought a paper calendar. These, oh, these are, these won't be meetings of the Commission yet, this is what I should be confirmed, so today, first, for the clarification on the motion to dismiss.
Attorney Gulya, how much time do you feel you'll need to review those and respond?
Well, I, I want a bit of time to review it. The following week, I, we have a pretty substantial hearing for the Commission, and obviously, time and attention is going to be devoted to that. It's not my intention to want to kick this, kick this down the road on this issue here, but if we could have, you know, maybe Friday, the June 22nd, to respond, by that date, I would appreciate that from that standpoint. If there's any way that we could get longer, I'd appreciate that as well, from that standpoint.
Well, let's go with Friday. I suggested, Mission, let's go with Friday, June 22nd, if you need more time. And Commission's been flexible in the past, and-
Correct.
Because you also are going to be reviewing whether you want to make more definite and certain, you know.
Correct.
I recognize that it might take some time if you decide to go that route as well.
Yep. And Attorney Windorf, if there's any need that you have, if something comes up between now and next Friday for a need for more time, please let me know, I'm happy to, happy to oblige.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
All right, so going on the assumption that the 20- So going on the assumption that the 22nd will be the response date, then we can schedule a commission motion hearing as early as sometime that following week? And I anticipate that being probably a day? I think there may be more than a day.
Yeah, I would think.
Yeah. I don't envision this being an overly long oral argument.
Okay. I'll propose the afternoon of the 26th.
I'll be back into town until 3:30.
All right. 27th?
I can do that.
I'm in mediation on the 27th. I'm available on the 28th or 29th.
I'm unavailable the 28th, but I'm available the 29th.
All right. 29th?
June 29th, sounding good. How about you down there, Warren?
I will be out of town that weekend. I'm in, if I'm needed, I'm going to be in Los Angeles that week.
Mr. Gulya, are you going to need the chief's presence?
I would prefer to have the chief present if for something of that magnitude. And if the chief isn't available, then I would like to ask to look for another date.
Sorry?
Okay. Let's descend to August.
No, July.
Is the week of the 4th? Excuse me. Is that available?
The 2nd?
The 2nd or 3rd?
Who do you think of the 9th?
Does that work for folks?
If it's the beginning of the week.
Yeah, Monday works for me and Tuesday works for me.
Objections?
I'm available Tuesday at the 10th.
Okay. All right.
It's a good time to be gone.
Morning, afternoon, all day.
Your preference, morning or afternoon?
Morning is fine.
Okay, the morning of the 10th.
You say 10 o'clock? Give you time to get up here?
I'm sorry, Captain Lapine, as of early June, Captain Lapine will be reassigned to the night shift, so he'd have to have something in the afternoon so he can get some adequate sleep.
Okay, 1 o'clock?
Thank you.
If the commission wishes to meet before 10:00 too, that's fine by me.
We change it to 1 PM?
Oh, 1 PM?
Yep.
Excuse me, 1 PM is fine.
Okay. Okay. So let's move on to witness and exhibit lists. We had a request from the chief until October 15th to comply. And then if we go with that date, then another 30 days to review by Captain Lapine. So that would put us into around December 1st for the actual motion, for the actual evidentiary hearing.
If necessary, we could set it up for both purposes.
I'm sorry, can you just repeat? Obviously, I'm still objecting to the lengthy timeline that puts us into October, November. So is it possible to have ideas of witness list by this motion hearing? Is that what you just suggested, Attorney Colley?
Yeah, the motion list would be to you by the 15th. Is there any way to expedite the production of the evidence at all, or at least a witness list? Mr. Gulya?
Witness lists can certainly be produced very soon. It's the exhibit lists that are going to be the challenge based upon what the outcome is of the records review.
And I think if I heard right earlier, the witness list will help Attorney Windorf in determining a large part of her discovery request. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. So how soon do you think you can have that list available, Attorney Gulya?
I'd be happy to turn over our witness list for the hearing on June 22nd when we respond to the motion. If you'd like it sooner, we can arrange to get that sooner.
I think June 22nd is reasonable. And then we'd be looking, as far as exhibit lists are concerned, are we still looking October as far as the ability to go through the public records issues?
I believe that the earliest would be October. The key issue is that October deadline, or that October timeline, excuse me, is contingent upon the ability maybe to produce transcriptions of some of the interviews for the female officer or another male officer and for a male lieutenant. But if there's going to be more interviews that are requested, this whole timeline is going to be blown out of the water. So, long story short, for purposes of providing an exhibit list, I think maybe a safer date might be either, you know, November 1st for the chief. And then we provide records, obviously, as it relates to that records request as they become available. Like the last match, if we do have a truly tailored, narrower request than what presently exists, I think we'd be able to have most everything by November 1st. Can we be in a position to produce our witness, our exhibit list on or around that date?
Well, another route we could go is to call witnesses and commence the hearing before that date, and then if additional documentation is necessary, produce it after the witnesses have been called. That would result in not having the hearing back-to-back, though.
I think it's going to stretch it out too far, and frankly, I think the hearing would simply be a better process for everybody, and frankly, more cost-efficient for everybody to simply do the hearing after the records that have been requested are produced.
I would have to say, in my experience, that's the truth, getting the entire commission together is generally harder than, will result more delay. I can remember hearings where it took almost six months to get when we followed that process, so.
And it's just, it's not something that's fresh in people's minds from that standpoint. So that's why I'd rather take the more careful approach of simply waiting to do the hearing until the information has been provided. And I think it's only fair to the other side that they have the information available so they can adequately prepare.
And depending on the volume of information, you're going to need anywhere from two weeks to a month to review it anyway. I'm assuming, Mr. Windorf.
Yes.
So if we look at November 1, we're talking review period to December 1. That would include time to bring any motions for more information or any motions, if there's anything where there's been some redaction or other limitation. So evidentiary motions to be provided to us by December 1. Now, we can schedule the matter for both the evidentiary hearings and the actual commencement of the testimony in early December. Does that sound reasonable to everyone?
Obviously, it's subject to my continued request for dismissal and objection, but thank you.
Right, and you can address that. That's one of the things you can address in your brief.
Thank you.
So now we finally got to setting the matter for hearing is the purpose of this particular meeting. And right now, it looks like we're in December.
Yep.
How does everybody's calendar look for December?
Probably on Christmas, I would.
Our regular meeting would be December 6th. Would that day work for folks?
Yes. Right now.
Okay. I'm sure I don't have any in December. I don't have much. Some more meetings.
Just looking at back-to-back dates that I would have, and I would ask, the chief, obviously, is a key component of my matter, as is Captain Balza. With regard to some of the other witnesses, my hope is that they would be available and that we would not have a situation where they would be unavailable. I would ask that if somebody had a, you know, scheduled vacation, something of that nature, that they not be forced back from wherever they're at to testify, but instead we find an alternative date to take their testimony. Although, my hope is that with this being this far out, we're able to work through those issues. With back-to-back dates that I'm available, assuming that Chief Smith and Captain Balza are also available, is the 13th and 14th, or the 18th, 19th, 20th, or 21st?
I'm wide open on both those dates, or all those dates.
Yep. Kyle, Captain Balza is in the room with us, so he can check and let you know.
Yeah, he just gave the.
All dates are good.
Okay. Those dates are good for both your folks.
Thank you. And then, you know, we have to, we check with our other witnesses, but my hope is with sufficient planning that we'd be able to address that. And for most of those folks, their testimony, I think, would be fairly limited information that if it needed to be taken on a different date, we could figure that out.
So the 6th is open?
Correct. So should we say the 13th and 14th? Pick the earliest, earlier dates?
Sure.
Okay.
Now, we're probably going to hold the record open after the hearing, but I think it would be wise for us to take at least one of those two days the next week for finalizing the report of the commission. And perhaps, if necessary, to give time for additional testimony. So should we take the 18th and the 19th? If we don't need the 19th, we won't use it.
Okay.
And that would be for us. Although, we'd ask the parties to take the 18th as well, in case it's necessary for testimony. And then we'll take the 18th and the 19th as a commission, in case we need to.
So 13th, 14th for us, and 18th, 19th?
Right. Hopefully, we won't need the 19th.
Okay.
And of course, that would be all day, the 13th and the 14th at least.
Yes.
Anything else either party would like to bring before the bottom?
I'm not sure if there's that many other questions or issues. Anything else? Attorney Gulya, did that cover everything that you wanted to get out of today?
I don't.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Last for motion to adjourn. By Commissioner Lo La, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Shaw, holding the flag. Close, we are adjourned.